I will call the regular council meeting of February 19th, 2019 to order. March 5th. Okay, I'm looking at minutes, I'm sorry. Of March 5th.
Okay, we'll start with roll call. Kuhn.
Here.
Burke. Teal. Olson.
Here.
Ramsey.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Or Richard.
You forgot me, I'm present.
Okay. West.
Yes.
Sorry.
That's okay. Okay, the first item is comments from citizens present. They're limited to three minutes per speaker. And please give your name and address. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Spencer.
Hi guys. Spencer Schumacher, 3809 Lexington Drive. I'm here on behalf of the Sustainability Committee tonight. I just wanted to, got a couple of things to touch base on. I wanted to thank you guys for reorganizing the planning staff and voting for a full-time position for the Sustainability Coordinator. One of the things that is really awesome about this is in the news this last week, there's been the Five City Grant, $200,000. Middleton is one of them. Our previous Sustainability Coordinator helped us get that grant, which is awesome. So pays for itself pretty quickly when you do it like that. So thank you on that. Another thing that is, I know is on the agenda tonight is a 500-kilowatt subscription to the airport for, or the solar panels at the airport. Where the Sustainability Committee is in support of that. And it's a great project. With that project and the other projects that are out there right now to be completed in 2019, we will be at 50% of the city's municipal use for the city buildings versus for alternative energy, which is a huge progress. It's not, it's gonna ellipse our goal of 25 by 25 and get us on track for our larger goal of 100% renewable. Several cities in the area have just voted to do the same thing. Momentum is building. Manona passed it last night for 100% resolution. And Pittsburgh passed it on February 26th. So we're in good company on that one. The other thing I wanted to update you guys on is our recycle center. We have decided to stop taking alkaline batteries. It's really has been a hard decision for us, alkaline batteries. We've based this decision on several different items. We want to have the most sustainable waste stream. Recycling alkaline batteries is not sustainable. It's really hard. Other municipalities are struggling with this all around also. There's not an easy way to get rid of them. And the amount of energy to use to get rid of them is really hard. So Madison is struggling. They've hired people to actually store them. All the other communities are, gone out of their budget. So I just want to give you guys an update on that. And if for right now, battery recycling is only recycle, rechargeable batteries can be recycled. Thanks guys.
Thank you Spencer. Anyone else? I'll close the. Yes.
I just wanted to thank Emily Kuhn, who provided these postcards to her district residents and invited them to share them with city staff, thanking city staff for the work they do. I've received a handful of them. And I just thought it was such a wonderful effort that she made to do that and to thank our staff. And I wanted to give her some credit publicly for what was really a beautiful initiative. Thank you Emily.
Thanks.
I will close the public comments section. Next item is approval of the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The agenda's approved. Next is proclamations. We have a proclamation proclaiming March 2019, March for Meals Month. Whereas on March 22nd, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. And whereas Meals on Wheels America established the National March for Meals Campaign in March 2002 to recognize this historic month, marked the importance of Older Americans Act Senior Nutrition Programs and raise awareness about senior hunger in America. And whereas the 2018 Observance of the March for Meals Campaign provides an opportunity to support senior nutrition programs that deliver vital and critical services. And whereas Middleton Senior Center, a multi-faceted service center, offers both Congregate Meals and Meals on Wheels programs. And whereas Independent Living, Inc., a multi-service nonprofit organization based in Dane County and serving in Middleton, has provided senior meal programs since its founding in 1973 and is celebrating the 30th anniversary of providing evening meals on wheels. And whereas volunteer drivers for both Meals on Wheels programs, who donate hundreds of hours of service each year, are the backbone of the programs, delivering nutritious meals to homebound seniors and adults with disabilities, as well as an important safety check on their well-being. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs everywhere are committed to alleviating hunger among older adults, regardless of their ability to pay for a meal. And whereas a nutritious meal helps seniors and adults with disabilities avoid premature or unnecessary institutionalization. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs deserve recognition for the contributions made to seniors in Middleton. Whereas Meals on Wheels provide a socialization opportunity for seniors to help combat loneliness and isolation. Now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of Gerdip Barar, Mayor of the City of Middleton, I do hereby proclaim March 2019 is March for Meals Month in the City of Middleton. Every citizen is urged to take time this month to honor Meals on Wheels and Congregate Meal sites, the seniors they serve and the volunteers who serve them. With this recognition, we honor our community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in Middleton and America.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 And we have to present the proclamation.
Hello everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
I just want to say thank you for this. The fact of the matter is that vulnerability knows absolutely.
Go to the microphone, please. Vulnerability knows absolutely no race. It knows no age. It knows no income level. It is a fact of life. You can wake up tomorrow morning and be vulnerable. Can we get in front of the? So anyway, thank you. Thank you. You guys are awesome.
Next item is under award of bid, quote, professional services. Award of bid to Advanced Building Corporation for construction of park shelter and restrooms at Penny Klein Park.
I'll move that we reject the award bid for ABC.
Second.
Discussion? Anyone have questions?
Not a question, just to recap for the public is that the bids came in quite high. It's kind of based on the timing of everything and just the market right now. And I think it makes sense for this body to reject the, to reject the bid. And do you want to clarify anything I said wrong?
No, you have it correct. I just wanted to add that the city is still committed to building this shelter. This is more a timing of construction than a commitment to build a shelter. And the plan is to rebid these in the fall with the hopes of getting better pricing.
Perfect, thank you.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? No one? So we've rejected the bid to advance building construction. Next item is Renewable Energy Rider Services Agreement for 500-kilowatt subscription to Middleton Municipal Airport Solar Project.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion?
Just a question to make sure I understand. And I guess this is directed to our city attorney, potentially. Under the agreement, it's really already just the third or the second page of the agreement. It's item 2B. It talks about, it starts off with during the term of this agreement, if the customer modifies an account that is subject to this agreement to a rate schedule, it is not qualified to take service under this schedule. The account shall remain subject to this agreement. However, the account's consumption shall be entirely excluded from any consideration set forth in Section 4 below until the account is again qualified to take service under this schedule. I'm just hoping that somebody here can maybe give me kind of an example of how this works because I just read the whole document. This is the one thing that I'm like, I just can't get my head around this one.
Well, obviously I don't know how you could do this, but it seems that this clause is a substantial incentive to the city to continue its commitment to this program for the life of the program. I mean, I don't know why we'd ever want to switch out of it because we're receiving the services at a lower kilowatt hour rate than we would be paying had it been at the normal rate. So I assume that economically, this would be a rather foolish thing for the city to do. So, but I don't honestly have a scenario for you that.
Okay.
Could discuss it.
Sure.
This whole thing is, is saving the city, well, what, 1.3 cents per kilowatt hour, which on a percentage basis, maybe Abby has it figured out, but it's, it's like 15, 18% on 500,000 kilowatt hours per kilowatt hour. So it's significant.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that explanation. I just, like I said, just wanted to see if anybody could give me a little bit better explanation. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion is approved. Under miscellaneous direction on fundraising for downtown Middleton Plaza.
I'll move approval as recommended by finance.
Discussion?
Abby, were we gonna talk about adding people to the committee too as part of this? To the? That wasn't brought up in finance, I don't think.
So I mentioned this at finance. I think we're gonna need some additional committee members to help with the fundraising efforts. We have four of six downtown Plaza team members that are willing to support the efforts in some way, but only one of those four is actually willing to go out and meet with potential donors. So my recommendation would be that you give staff some guidance to actually go out and talk with individuals in the community that we think would be qualified to help with the effort and then to bring back some recommendations to you. And that won't be able to happen until your April 2nd meeting because we have a Plaza Advisory Team meeting on March 18th. So I won't have time to get anything on the March 19th council agenda.
And how many more, or how many committee members would you be looking at adding? How many more you think you need?
Well, my personal preference is to never have a committee with more than nine people. So I would think nine would be a max, but we could probably live with seven.
Alright, thanks.
Would they be just a working group without being part of the committee? Or do you think being part of the committee is the way to go with that?
I think it would be more of a working group. I think we would keep the Plaza Advisory Team intact with the six members that have gone through the formal appointment process that can help with finalizing the design of the Plaza. We are at about 95% design right now, but we've indicated to the architecture firm that we would like them to keep the contract open because we've seen that sometimes in fundraising campaigns, there are minor modifications that are requested by donors. So we want to keep some flexibility there. Ultimately, we would like to put the Plaza out for bid in November to get to meet the favorable timeframe. I kind of whispered to Matt during the last meeting to see if there might be a possibility to actually pair that with the shelters, but it might be too different to consider. So, you know, we could bring back some, somewhere between seven and nine. A recommendation for seven to nine working group members, four of whom would be the members that have already indicated that they'd be willing to serve from the Plaza Advisory Team. We need to recruit at least three additional people.
Recruiting at least three?
Yep.
That would be willing to meet with people too? That would be part of the requirement if they were to join that working group?
Yes. Okay.
Any other discussion?
Just on clarification of the motion. The recommendation that came from Finance Committee was to refer the funding of the fundraiser to both the Community Development Authority and to the Tourism Commission. I don't think anybody mentioned that in this meeting, so just wanted to make sure it was discussed publicly.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Funding recommendation for referendum information mailer stormwater utility.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Discussion? Mark?
So I will bring up my concerns again. This, this council has previously stated that stormwater utility funds are for construction only. This is clearly not construction. And the funding source of the utility should be rejected. I know many of you disagree with that, but that's, I think that it sends, sets a bad precedent to start using these funds for things other than construction.
Emily?
Excuse me. The second item I have is on the postcard that we've received today. On the face of the postcard, the last sentence says, "If the fee increase is not approved, other city projects such as roads will be delayed." That is factually incorrect. And I would, would move that we change that to say something that says that these storm projects may be delayed.
Emily?
Oh, that's my friendly amendment. Is that that last sentence needs to be changed because it is factually incorrect.
I just want to clarify that for past referendums, we sent out postcards as well. Is that true?
I don't remember if the city sent out one initially for the stormwater utility.
Do you have a recollection?
The Friends of Pheasant Branch, on their own, supported the creation of the utility and sent out mailers. I don't remember.
Other referendums, like that are not water utility?
We haven't had any other referendums. The school district has their own.
I believe we sent one out Emily, but I'm sorry, my, my memory's a little bit hazy right now.
Okay, mine too.
About that.
The main publicity came through the Friends of Pheasant Branch. Now, I will say when the stormwater utility was established in the legal ordinance that was approved, there's a fixed fee and a variable fee. The fixed fee was set by the Stormwater Utility Board and I. That would have had to have been approved by council too, wouldn't it?
Yes.
And approved by council of 25 cents out of the $15. That fee was for administrative services such as the billing for the utility. That has never been used. And we have a little over $3,000 accumulated in that fund.
Okay.
So that's what's being proposed to be used. Kathy?
I have a comment here on, under yes means. I thought the wording was kind of awkward when it says for a period of five years beyond the maximum property tax revenue levy limits, that it goes the term and then this beyond, it doesn't flow very well. And I was wondering if the city may increase the fees beyond the maximum property tax revenue limits to repair damage.
This is what Larry wrote for us and that we passed in our resolution a couple of weeks ago. The exact wording.
Okay. I was just saying, it's a little confusing to me, but that's.
Joanna?
I agree, that sentence is, I think, inappropriate. So I would just move, I would second Mark's, or accept the friendly amendment that that be, that sentence be stricken and just end at five years.
Okay.
Mark, I have a question for you. How else would you propose paying for this if it's not through this?
Yeah, I mean, that's my concern is. How will it be paid for?
How will what be paid for?
The dam, the flood damages.
Oh, thank you for inviting me to answer that question. So I received from Bill a total schedule of what they're gonna give to FEMA for stormwater, storm control or water control damages. And it totals about 4.9, $5 million. So let's just play rough numbers. So $5 million. 3.4 of it is the Stream Bank. From City of Madison on the north and south creeks, or all the way from Stricker Tideman to the lake, north and fourth, north and south forks, all the way to the lake. 3.4 million dollars. About 900,000 is for a bulkhead on Dewey Court. 300,000 approximately, ballpark numbers, for the slope north of Park. About another $300,000 for the Donna Drive Park. And about another $42,000 for miscellaneous other things. All totaling, this is totaling to Bill's sheet of about, just about $5 million. The stormwater utility currently has about $300,000 in fund balance. It's gonna bring in another 1.1, 1.2 million dollars over the next four years for a total of about $1,004,000, ballpark numbers. The city is already in possession of grants from the DNR totaling about $700,000. So there's 2.1 million dollars. I, at the Water Resources Stormwater Utility Joint Meeting, received an assessment from Cardinal. He received that estimates that the storm, or the Stream Bank repair is probably closer to the $2.5 million, as opposed to $3.5 million. Right? So that the initial estimate of $5 million that we submitted to FEMA is, is in all likelihood overstated by a million dollars. Accepting that, that it's, that the total project repair is now gonna be closer to four and saying that there's gonna be probably a million dollars in repairs along the corridor that FEMA will not cover. So now we're down to $3 million. Assuming that they cover 70% of that $3 million, that's another 2.1 million dollars of funding available. That 2.1 plus the 2.1 we already have says that there's 4.2 million dollars in funding available that we can identify today to cover $4 million of damages. So my question is, if that's the case, why do we need a referendum that's gonna triple the ERU rate?
I think we need to let Sean talk about specific grants. I know one of those four grants that you're talking about was for a totally new project that had nothing to do with stormwater damage. Emily?
Before he responds, I thought the estimate, and I apologize if it's in here, but I thought the estimate was more towards 7 to 8 million.
That's total.
Total.
Talking about the, the water control features.
Okay, thank you.
And I think Bill sent out a different sheet to us that, because FEMA's not going, FEMA will not reimburse non-engineered portions.
And I discounted that, right? I took a million bucks off the, off the total.
Without seeing it written out, I'm sorry, I can't follow your numbers there.
But that's not what's before us, I was just gonna just.
Right, and that's true. This is, what is before us is approving the flyer and.
You opened the door.
Doesn't make it your main, so.
I was answering your question. So if that's not the question you meant to ask.
That's, the question I meant to ask was how would we pay for the flyer?
But that's not the question you asked, which is, I gave you the answer to the question you asked. If you'd like to ask the other question, which is how would we pay for the flyer, my recommendation is that it go back to Water Resources or to public lands or to conservancy lands. Since those are, generically, those are the sponsors of the projects that Stormwater Utility is gonna be repairing.
If we do that, we will not be sending out a flyer because we do not have the time to get the information, to send it to those meetings and have it come back to council.
Are the administrative costs that, what did you say, 25 percent, or 25 cents of the fee every year goes towards?
Administrative cost.
Are those administrative costs just sitting in a fund? They haven't been used, so they're not.
They've never been used. Okay.
They're part of the fund balance in the Stormwater Utility.
So they just sit there?
They are available.
They're not segregated administrative? They just sit in the fund?
Yeah, what I, what I did is looked at all of the revenue that came in from the fixed rate and we have a net of about $3,400 through 2018. That's part of the balance in the Stormwater Utility. So I think the Stormwater Utility Board and the council could allocate them for another purpose, but currently that's part of the balance in Stormwater Utility.
We set up the utility with a fixed 25 cent fee initially.
That's fine, I was just trying to see if it was segregated.
As a segregated fixed fund fee.
But again, I think the operative issue, those are sitting in the utility fund balance, which the council has directed only to be spent on construction costs.
Except for the administrative?
No.
No?
No. This council has said that the balances in Stormwater Utility are to be used for stormwater construction costs.
I'm having trouble, I've asked for documentation of that because I don't remember council saying that.
This was something that was done last spring in council, in one of the, one of the council meetings. I'll leave it to Mike to figure out how to get the minutes. But this was something that was voted on last spring.
Did we actually voted on that?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mark, we voted on what? The cops voted on what?
I believe that we voted on, on use of Stormwater Utility Funds to fund construction only. Because this issue came up again earlier in the spring.
No, we discussed it.
We actually had a vote.
Are you talking about the dredging project of the South Pond?
I think that it may have been around that time, but there was a separate issue that we voted on.
I do recall that, and I don't know that that, did that come from the Stormwater Utility to the council?
No. The Stormwater Utility Board hasn't discussed that.
I know there's been discussion by the council on what should be applicable for Stormwater Utility Funds, whether it should include construction costs or not. The ordinance is more expansive than that, but it has been the council's preference, particularly those who were on the council when the Stormwater Utility was approved, to dedicate the Stormwater Utility Funds as much as possible to construction projects. That, I think, is true.
I would argue that the, as much as possible was not part of the discussion. That it was a strict limitation.
I think we're having an ongoing debate whether it's a strict interpretation or not because we had a debate here not too long ago that didn't get resolved. And I think we're still debating whether your engineering costs are part of construction costs. So I, you know, I don't think it's settled law, if you will.
I think we should just vote.
I agree. I agree.
Is the motion now to exclude that last sentence on the back page? Was that, who, who made the motion?
Joanna.
I accepted that as a friendly amendment, I mean, the motion.
Is it striking the whole sentence?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, the sentence that would be struck is on the back page of the handout you received tonight, that says, "If the fee increase is not approved, other city projects such as roads will be delayed." So, that would be struck. And the entirety of the statement would be, "The city's share, not reimbursed by FEMA, of the 2018 flooding damages to stormwater facilities is estimated to be between 1.5 million to 3.5 million dollars. The increased charge would generate up to 2.8 million dollars over five years."
Those are all facts.
Yeah. Yes, okay. I would like a roll call vote. Emily?
I support it.
Robert?
Is that a yes? Are we at yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Howard? I will vote for it.
Yes.
Kathy?
No.
Yes.
Vote is 7-1.
6-1.
6-1.
Right?
No.
No, 7-1.
I'm sorry, the mayor is missing.
Yeah. Yes. He doesn't vote anyway. Okay. Next is 2017 and 2018 Wisconsin Pollution Discharge Elimination System Reports.
Is that just, just accepting the reports, that's all we?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next item is under ordinances, second reading, an ordinance to require signed postings for public hearings on rezoning, conditional use, and variance applications, and to provide zoning protest procedure.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next ordinance is an ordinance to amend various provisions relating to direct sellers.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ordinance is approved. Planning and zoning, request for tax increment finance District III assistance for proposed modifications in addition to former Globe University Building, Kramer Development for Chartwell, 1345 Dimming Way.
Move approval, recommended by Finance.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Resolutions. Resolution 201909, declaring intent to assess cost of improvement for Maywood Avenue reconstruction.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Resolution 201909 is approved. Resolution 201910, declaring intent to assess cost of improvements for Bristol Street, North Avenue reconstruction.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Resolution 201910 is approved. Resolution 201911, declaring intent to assess cost of improvements for Terrace Avenue resurfacing.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Resolution 201911 is approved. Resolution 201913, providing for the sale of approximately 3,490,000 general obligation promissory notes.
Move approval, recommended by Finance.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Last items, committee appointments. Common council appointment to the commu, Community Campus Committee. We need nominations.
Nominate Kathy.
Second.
I nominate Susan West.
How many is the council allowed to appoint? Is it just one?
One.
One.
Okay, so, the nomination is for Kathy. All in favor?
What, can I ask a question? Have any of the committees or other nominations been done yet?
No.
Plan Commission's done?
So, um.
Yes.
Parks? It's a nine-member committee. Jocelyn Sansing represents the library, Tammy Derrickson represents the senior center. PRFC appointed Matt Amundsen as their representative last night. Plan Commission nominated Jen, Jennifer Murray from the commission. So, that's four. The mayor gets three appointments from three different districts in the city, and he's taking applications for that currently. And then, the council appointment, and I'm missing one.
Chamber.
Oh, the chamber. Hopefully, we'll get Van.
So, but technically speaking, this is an ad hoc committee or a permanent committee?
Ad hoc.
Ad hoc.
Okay, 'cause it doesn't say that here. So, the mission of the, the ad hoc committee is, what, until the, the community campus is redone?
Well, at the very least, we would expect the Community Campus Committee to continue through the planning process, and we expect that to end at the end of this year. But it's a tight timeframe, so I would wanna give some flexibility to go into the spring of, of 2020 if necessary.
Abby, is the building committee going to be involved?
The building committee does not have a formal appointment, but I'm guessing that any recommendations that come out of the Community Campus Committee would need to go through the building committee as well. Especially if we're talking about new buildings, or.
Yeah, I would hope so.
Yep.
Robert?
Um, just a clarification on the three appointees by the mayor. I think we mentioned, I guess it would have been the last meeting, that we were hoping that those three would be representatives not so closely tied to the center of downtown, so that we could get viewpoints from the whole city, and I don't know that I've seen that written down anywhere, or, or that the mayor is, is holding himself to the kind of that, the goal.
I, my understanding was that the council direction was to say that each of those three appointments needed to be from different aldermanic districts. And the mayor understands that, and we've had that conversation. He's.
And he's sent out a request.
Okay, I, I, I guess, I, three aldermanic districts could also be basically downtown. It was like, one, two, and three, for instance. So, I, I, I thought we were trying to be a little bit more aggressive in trying to spread the joy, so to speak.
But the council has approval.
Yeah, we get to confirm it.
Okay.
I'd just like to say, I'd very much like to be on this. I'm on the CDA, which is part of this downtown area, be affecting that. I'm on tourism, landmarks, sustainability. I think all of those would be beneficial to be on the, this planning committee.
Emily?
I'd like to know what your vision is for it. And I say that because if, if this is a one-time opportunity, we're asking a lot of developers to come in across the city to do infill, and to look at going up, specifically like in my district. And if we're taking advantage of what is here, and what's available, and what's sensible, I'd like to know if you are supportive of three to four-story buildings.
Three to four, yeah.
Specifically downtown.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and.
I wouldn't want, I would probably bulk at five, because of the neighbors around it. I don't know. We already have some of that, though, with the Middleton Center.
Okay, and with your experience with the Sustainability Committee, I'm assuming that you're supportive of solar panels, and the water resources, and things like that. And what is your final vision on transportation corridors, as well as workforce housing development?
Transportation corridors as it relates to downtown? Well, they would be very pedestrian-friendly. I would imagine there would be bike lanes available, and plenty of parking. We always want more transit stops downtown.
Okay, so you'd be pushing for that? Yeah. Workforce housing?
I don't know, we haven't designed this yet. We don't know if it'd be part of it. It might be. If it is, that would be good.
Okay. And since I nominated Susan West, will you answer the same questions?
Oh, I wasn't nominated.
I apologize. Did I misspeak?
Or was I? Okay, I was. Okay. Yeah, 'cause you don't have the second nominations. Correct, okay. Let's see if I can remember all of them, Emily. Experience, first was, what was your first question? Basically.
Thank you. Vision.
Vision? Okay, I'm envisioning a building that does have good land use, that is not sprawling. I clearly would support at least three, four stories. I think we've got to go that way. Being, part of it is a vision that we do not need to expand into very profitable farmland outside the city. So, anything, this is just in general, that the city can do for dense buildings inside the city. We have a considerable piece of land here. It's from where the library is, the parking lot, the parking lot across the train tracks, and then the land that this building is on, where Mom used to be, parking lot, the senior center. It's certainly been suggested that we can even consider building over the railroad track and using that land. I think that's something that needs to be at least looked at feasibly. I want a building that probably the three, the four stories would assure that it's got steel beams inside when it's constructed, because it's so close to the railroad tracks. We've already, I've had concern with the library, with having to redo the roof, that that could have been a potential problem. So, I want it to be a sustainable, long-term building with plenty of space in it for, one of the prime things is space for meeting places. I know there are many groups that want to meet in various city buildings, and that's a common complaint. We've had recent concerns about polling places. We need to be able to have a single place. I think this could potentially be a good single place for polling. It would include parking, which is becoming a problem downtown. And I want to see as a vision of the different departments being able to work well together, especially the library, recreation, the senior center, and with the youth commission in there. So, putting those into a building in a way that will facilitate that interaction, I think would be really good. And that's one of the things architecture can do. They need to look at how to encourage interaction. And I've got to admit, I worked at the vet school for a long time. That building was not built to encourage interaction among the scientists, educators. We all stayed in our little cubby holes and didn't come out. We didn't have the common gathering areas to facilitate that interaction, so I see that we need, that's a prime thing that we need. Along with a place for citizens to feel comfortable when they're coming, to register to vote, to pay property taxes, and so on, and have, feel comfortable in the building. What was the next one?
Uh, transportation corridors and workforce housing, as well as I asked her about the water and solar panels.
Yeah, definitely anything to promote sustainability, so. High-quality heating, cooling, best LED lights, kinds of things, solar panels, definitely. And again, that would require having a very good, strong building to be able to support those. As far as, it needs to be walkable, easily accessible. I could see a small entry area that's more in, quite inviting for people to gather, in addition to going in. And I think we need to keep in mind that this campus, we have quite a bit of land here, and if we build vertically, there's potential uses for workforce housing could be included. On, if we built across the street, we could include workforce housing on this side. Is a possibility. I think those all need to be looked into. Transportation would be trying to get, we don't have a bus route right now going down Hubbard Avenue, but hopefully we could get a close bus route. And certainly make the whole area walkable. Okay.
Thank you for that, and since there's no second, I, I hope that Kathy heard her response. Oh.
You made the nomination, we're good.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, now we vote?
I think. Show of hands.
Show of hands. Okay, all in favor of Kathy Olson? Okay, that's six. All in favor of Susan West? Kathy, you're the council appointment.
Thank you.
Okay, next one is Airport Management Plan Advisory Committee Appointments.
Are the nominations that are in our packet, are, is that the whole slate? So, they filled every slot?
I think so.
I'll move approval.
I'll second. I just had a question. Why are we filling all these slots now, as opposed to third week in April, when?
This is not the.
Special ad hoc, isn't it?
This is an ad hoc advisory committee, not the airport commission.
This is the.
The planning of the.
Yeah. Airport.
For the master plan of the airport.
Master plan, yeah.
This isn't something that would require a councilperson on to help facilitate that?
That's a good question.
I think it still goes to the airport commission, right? This is just for.
Airport commission is the.
Yeah.
Yeah, but does it need a, Howard, you're on the airport commission. You don't think it needs a councilperson? I have one comment on it. Businesses are our main users of this airport, and I would like to see more of the business community represented. We have one person, Mike Frank, from the business community. I have a concern in that regard. Howard?
I'm gonna be a little wordy than that. Thank you, Susan. As chairman of the airport commission for the past century and a half, or so, as you, as everybody I'm sure knows, that the airport commission is undergoing a probably somewhere between a five- and seven-year improvement project to make some major changes at the airport. Business environment in our community, which is exactly what an airport is. But as a, as a result of that process, we have to, should, certain benchmark environments, some of which are, are state of FAA, and one of those happens to be, it's a good idea, they don't require, it's a good idea to have an advisory committee start building airports, because you have such a wide diversity of people that go through that process. So, as a result, we want to establish the advisory committee for the airport. I've looked over, there are nine, for all of you who wanna read all these things, there's nine applicants in the back of your packet. Nine applicants for nomination. Chairman, myself, had exactly two minutes of. Chairman, myself, had exactly two minutes of involvement in that process, and that was by talking to one of the applicants who happens to live in the town of Springfield. Pressed with her and suggested that she submit her, her form, and which she did, which I'm glad for that. But other than that, I've had less than five minutes of involvement in this process over the last month and a half or two months. Our micromanaging mayor took over the process and has, since then, I've had no involvement whatsoever. Um, it has always been an objective of this kind of committee to have a diversity of history and citizenry in the community and involvement in the surrounding communities, or townships, actually, to make up this, because everybody's involved in this one way or the other. And I, I was not involved in the process whatsoever. The problem I see with this list of people, and don't get me wrong, if I, if I come off as saying these people don't know what they're doing, that's not what I'm trying to say. I'm saying that these people, some of these people, I don't think really belong on this commission, committee, I'm sorry. To give you an example, and I will not name names, I sit two chairs off of the mayor's bench up here, and I've listened to him for the last year and a half talk about diversity and transparency in the city. And I pick up these things and I look at it, and it's the same thing as I saw the last time we had one of these, the exact same thing. If you don't have MA, MS, BA, PhD, or a doctorate behind your name, you're not gonna make the list. There's one person on here that's had dirt on their hands. Okay? And that guy happens to be Lee Huberman, everybody knows who he is. Other than that, the mayor who, in my personal opinion, has no, no credentials whatsoever to be doing job interviews for committees and commissions and anything like that, has decided to put people on this commission, on this committee who, in my opinion, for the most part, don't belong there. I just want to state that publicly. So when you get around to the vote for whatever you want to do with this, mine is gonna be no.
Joanna?
We weren't elected mayor. The mayor was. And I, I have to go back to that. It's his authority to make the recommendations to this council. And unless there is someone that's not qualified, that you want to move, remove from this list, I don't know how you just say no to the entire slate. Because I don't, that's the authority that the mayor has, and I think we should, unless there is someone that is not qualified to be on this council, and you want to pull them out separately, I don't think we just vote no on all of them. I don't see any problem with any of them. I think any of us, many of us, might not make the list sometimes, depend, if they were asking for qualifications for certain committees. I certainly don't have any qualifications for public works, but I think my voice is really important in public works. So I'm gonna vote yes, because I think that's the mayor's prerogative.
I'm gonna, Mark?
So I'll weigh in on this, because I had such a, a fun time last spring. It is the mayor's prerogative to recommend appointments, but it is the council's authority to approve those. And whether you approve all of them, one of them, or none of them, that's certainly something that you can, in my opinion, that you can do. So i- if, depending on how you want to do this, how the motion was structured, I think it's perfectly acceptable for a member to, to strike individual nominations, or at least to make that motion. So I don't think that we've given the mayor absolute authority to make these appointments without our review. And so it's a question of how, logistically, how do you weed these out? That specific people that you would like to strike, then make that motion. If there are specific, or, or if the whole group is something that's not to your liking, make that motion. But I, I think we just, you know, we do, we, as a council, we cannot give the mayor unlimited authority to make appointments without our review. And consent comes down to.
Joanna, would you accept an alternative motion to vote individual by individual, like we do on committee appointments?
Sure, we can separate the question.
Okay.
Will that help? Is anybody...
Yes.
Uh, I mean, partly, I guess one of the questions I have, if, sorry, do I have the floor for a moment?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, we've seen this before where we get the list of the, the, the recommendations of the mayor. We don't know, I don't know who applied, who is not on this list. I don't know what the other options would have been. I don't know anybody else's qualifications. I have this list of, I counted eight, but I'll take your word that it's probably nine individuals. Um, and I, I don't see anything wrong with these individuals, but I'm not comparing these individuals to any other option right now, because I don't know the other interested parties.
And I, I think the answer to that is that we don't necessarily have that right to see that list.
Right.
What we have is the mayor's recommendations. So this is kind of, my impression is that this is kind of like a voir dire process, right? This is the pool. Strike him, don't strike him. You know, it's really...
Yeah, I'm, from my first comment, I'm concerned that we don't have more people representing the business community. And I can, there's certainly some people here that I would not vote for, there are people that I would vote for. And I would hope that if we don't choose some people, the mayor could then take some information from this discussion and look for people that will be truly using, especially on a commercial level, the airport. I think that's, that's what I see as a real, that's really lacking here. And I think, since those are going to be the primary users of the airport, we need to be sure they are there.
So let me just ask, is there a, a time constraint on getting this committee established?
Uh, mayor's been working on it for the last month and a half.
But there's nothing pending that says that these people have to meet and take action on anything?
Um...
In, in the near future? My point is, is that, again, we've been handed some nominees without a whole lot of time to digest them. And so maybe the, the way to do this, again, is to defer this and have the opportunity for individual council members to ask questions of the mayor on why specific types of nominees were omitted, and to recommend to him that he might want to make those nominees, right? If there's some type of background that you think would be beneficial to, to serve, then make that recommendation to the mayor that he find someone with, with those credentials.
So which one do you tell him not to, to accept then? Shouldn't we be doing that tonight?
Well, no, we can always defer this until some, he, until some, until the council members...
So which one of these don't we want him to appoint then?
If you want to do something with this, either, okay?
Yeah.
Up or down, whichever you want to do it, or defer it. And then, if you're gonna defer it, in, in all honesty, you should come up with some reason for deferral, and how you're gonna handle what it is you want to try to find out.
I think that's very under democratic, though. If you're gonna say defer this tonight because Mark's gonna tell the mayor, I want certain one not to be done, and another one to be done, that's one vote, and we could have done that in public. We should do that in public. Not each of us going to the mayor separately to say, oh, I don't want so-and-so, and I think you should substitute someone else.
I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting that, that, I'm not suggesting that you tell the mayor that there's someone in this group that needs to be stricken. What I'm suggesting is that the, that you...
But that's what you ultimately are telling him. If you don't want, if you want someone else to replace one of these, you are telling him, one of these, we don't know who, which one of those you're gonna recommend, should be done. If we have the vote, though, and one of them doesn't get enough votes, then he knows he has a slot, and then you have the opportunity to tell him, that's what we're looking for. That person, this one person didn't have the qualification. I think that's a better, more democratic way to do it.
Um...
Robert?
Thank you. The only question I have, and I, I tend, tend generally to agree with you, Joanna, but the one thing that's missing tonight is the mayor, where we could ask him point-blank questions in public. I got this list on Friday night, looked at it Saturday morning, and that was the first and only time I've had a chance to learn who these people are. And I don't know them all personally. So actually, I can't vote against any of them, but I don't know much about them to vote for them either. And at least if the mayor were here in public, in, with TV cameras running, we can, we could ask questions at least, and that would be the one reason I could see to defer it without, you know, without making a vote tonight.
Is that your motion?
We already have a motion.
No motion to defer. Are you, are you...
Yes, I will, I will, is that an amended?
No.
Okay, I will make a motion to defer.
I'll second that.
We have to vote on that first. Any further discussion on the motion to defer? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Aye.
So it carried six-two. We have deferred...
Six-two, right?
Yes. Okay, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We're adjourned.